You're watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 9th meeting of the Michigan Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
Please stand for the fudge. Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, welcome and Happy New Year to everyone. Recording in progress. Okay, Joan, could you please do the roll?
President Dombry's.
Present.
Michael Martinez.
Not here.
Since he was not even properly, shouldn't he?
Probably shouldn't be on here yet. I wasn't sure and I left him on only because, you know, nobody had given new oaths yet, so, okay.
Do we have anything in writing for the record?
He actually did send me an email today, so I'll forward that to you.
Ralph Fox from Sam Paxton.
Here.
Rich Young, looks like he's going to be absent. Myself, Attorney Brad Damski. Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
Present.
Police Chief Mark Swistak.
Present.
Park Board President Gene Paxton.
She's on.
She what?
She's right on.
Oh.
On the remote, yes.
Okay. Matt Bowen is absent. And Field Enforcement Officer Detcho. Here. Plug Plan Administrator Ray Dombry is absent. Absent. Applying Commission President Ralph Fox, we know you're here, you already answered once. And Website Samantha Arnold.
Present.
Okay. We have to wait until next week. That's all for now. So why are you?
We have to do it before the end of the month, January 31st. So we cannot wait until the end. We would have to meet at another time. You know, the alternative is three get their oaths right now and then the other two have to come in.
I think that's what we should do.
Yeah, yeah, so let's have, you know, three of us do the oath and we can do the oath now and then we can proceed with elections or we can do the elections next month after we have everybody on board. Okay, to wait on that? Okay, fine. So we will, I will table number four, okay, to next month. All right, Joan, so would you like to do these oaths for us right now so that we could properly then proceed with our meeting?
Would you all like to get together so we can do it?
Yes, absolutely.
So one of the time we're both together, all three of them.
Don't say state your name when she says state your name.
Yeah.
I need those things, so I need you to turn.
I, Diana Lewis.
Sam Paxton.
Samantha Arnold. Through songs where or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana and that I will faithfully, impartially, and diligently discharge the duties of the Office of Michigan Shores Town Council at large according to the law into the best of my ability. I will. No, you signature than your printed name underneath it.
Yes, I understand.
So if I can formally form me, is what I have to fill out, so you have to give it back.
Okay. Okay, but it says again, signature, that's why I wonder.
I have to have your answer.
Okay. Oh, that's true, okay.
I always know that because we did Kingsbury last night and everybody did a lot.
I did on the last night.
But you should. That one's signature rather than handoff.
Okay.
Got it, Joan.
Okay, thank you.
So Diana, just to clarify, where can I get them to send?
Yes, I will reach out to the county again tomorrow.
When you know that I'll schedule it.
Excellent, okay, very good. Hopefully she'll send it through tomorrow then. Samantha, you can come up unless you want to hang out there or just come, do wherever you want. Okay. All right, so please take a, council members, please review the meeting agenda. I was making a few additions as I was going along, thinking did we need to add some? These are mine, but if you need them all. Thank you. Okay. All right, so on the second page, you may have an older copy online for yourself, but I had thought I sent out to everybody. Under 14, I had added two different items, C, okay, we have A, B, and I added C, a whole harmless agreement for 501L portal. And then I was just concerned about whether or not, because there was a question raised about the BZA raising their fee and was a public hearing required for this, so I added that as another question on this.
Where are you putting?
That's under miscellaneous business. So number 14, I added C and D there.
501C, I mean 501L portal?
501L portal, yes.
And the other one was?
Was the, the BZA has raised their fee and I said, was this, was a public hearing required, blah, blah, blah. So I, that's all that I wrote down for it and because I wanted to bring those questions up. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
I haven't.
Council members, nothing? Sam, nothing?
I'd like a motion to accept the agenda for the evening. Two additions to something specific.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ralph and Samantha. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, four ayes. Oh, Rich is here.
Somebody else.
Oh, Samantha, well, you can sit there, so Ralph, Rich can join me up here then.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Get the head of the table now.
Yeah.
Get them coming in late.
Well, that's like that last seat that's left in front of the teacher.
Twenty-one say ask, I didn't get beat up, I had more skin cancer.
Ooh, yep, not.
Yesterday I got chucked up.
Aye, aye.
I should be the poster boy.
Well, I hope it's going to be okay. I said, I hope it's going to be okay.
As long as I take care of it.
Well, that's true. All right, so we have just adopted our meeting agenda. Is there a copy for Rich to use too?
I got it.
Oh, you got it there.
Unless it's.
No, we just added, we added here. This is my copy that I added under number 14. We added two things. 501L portal. Is that an old agenda? That must be an old agenda, you know.
The 23rd one, I gave you a sample of that one you sent.
Oh, that was just a sample that I sent.
Is that fig 23 or is it the top or 24? Because you sent that one through and I gave him a copy of it.
Oh, okay, that was just a sample because I sent out to everybody to see what last year's looked like, you know, and for putting together the new one.
Do you have this one in there, Rich?
Joan is passing this along.
Pass that in a little long.
Here we go. Under number 14, we just added 501L portal regarding a whole harmless agreement. That would be C, 14C. Yes, whole harmless and D, a question about BZA fees.
Well, it's like they're working on the 500L portal.
I saw B1 there the other day.
Whether it's inside or outside.
Well.
And D is?
D is the BZA fee. Okay, so then we'll just bring it up, but that's a topic we will discuss. Okay, so, okay, thank you very much. So now let's move on to approving the meeting minutes of December 12th. Has everybody had a chance to review the revised minutes that Joan provided?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Any questions on the minutes or any comments?
Yes, I still have a problem with the clerk treasurer's written, under council comments, she states Sam also concerned about the utility bills, which is true, that was a historical letter, and then she enters, the clerk treasurer's office has it under control and not many residents are delinquent. The minutes should reflect that the clerk treasurer states that the town has it under control and not many are delinquent.
That's reasonable, okay. And also, I was, I just added what Sam was also concerned about the delinquent utility bills. So we just need to insert the word, the clerk treasurer stated that.
I didn't have to say that because that's the right there, clerk treasurer has it under control.
Well, no, that you stated that you have it under control because that's what we found in the minutes. It's a small, it's a small correction. Yeah, okay, so just the word stated and that's it. So, any other corrections, additions?
There's God.
No?
Can't just get five of them.
Well, we already checked it before, Joan, so this was the one issue that had come up. So if there are no other additions or corrections, do I have a motion to approve the minutes with these two corrections?
I'll make that motion, sure.
Okay. All right, Ralph Fox moves to approve the minutes with the two corrections. Sam Paxton, seconds. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, five ayes. And the minutes have been approved. Let's move on to approving the minutes of the December 30th meeting. Any questions or concerns about that?
I haven't, no.
Okay, Sam, none? I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at them, Rich?
No.
No?
Very good.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting as produced on the 30th with no changes.
All right. So it's written, I need a second for that?
Second.
Okay, Sam Paxton, seconds. Ralph Fox moves, Sam Paxton, seconds, approving the minutes as written for December 30th. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, let us move on to the next then. And that will be reports, the invoices from Joan. Yes, please.
January, up to January, down, Long Beach, for police protection, $5,174. Michigan Shores Volunteer Fire Department, $105 for rental. Office D for business credit, there's several, that's what they call it, some credit for our office supplies. It was toner, three different colors of toner for our printer, $390.96. Office supplies, code enforcement officer, ink, and this is black, $24.49. And office supplies, copy paper, tape miscellaneous, $60.71. Aim for membership into IMPACT, $50. Republic Services, $4,659.72. Comcast, $174.30. Horizon Bank, first aid deposit box, $35. Brendan Heckman for travel, $40. Access Support Company for video games, $500. Maple City Tree, removal of three, that uprooted onto shed and across the roadway, $2,000. LaPorte County Hero Dispatch, advertising for our additional appropriations, $32.58. Michigan Shores Volunteer Fire Department for the fire protection, $3,755.17 for a grand total of $17,006.94.
Does anyone have any questions, Joan?
No.
Is the Maple City Tree expenditure the second half of the?
It's exactly what you signed the, you didn't sign it because you weren't here for the additional appropriation bill. Not additional appropriation, for the amount that the resolution was written for. Oh, they haven't done anything yet.
Okay. Anybody else, any comments on? All right, then if there are no more questions, then I will ask for someone to move to approve the vouchers as presented by Joan.
I'll move to approve the vouchers.
Okay, Sam Paxton moves, I need a second. Rich Young, seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, you're still having a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Maybe just type, somebody might just want, it's a pay to the fire department, but the appropriation is from the river fund?
That comes from the funds.
That's just the, that's saying where the funding came from, the description, I'm like, why do we pay the fire department for a river fund? That's just for the appropriation. Gotcha.
Okay.
Just get all of the.
Okay, Joan would like to explain.
The reason it is where it is is there's not enough money in the general fund to cover the expenses that really belong to.
Right, so it's.
Because of our tax.
I didn't understand, I understood the appropriation was probably the funding came from, and then I thought this person usually about were paying as close to where it came from, so I was just trying to get clarity.
Very good, okay. All right, so I will ask again, all in favor, to approve the vouchers as presented by Joan, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Rich, did you say aye? Aye. Samantha, did you say?
Oh, aye.
Okay. You could say nay if you want to. Thank you. Five ayes and the vouchers have been approved. Okay. All right. I will send these along in a minute where you guys can get started on doing these and then we will move on. No resolutions and ordinances today, so I will move right into appointments to boards and commissions, liaison positions. So first of all, I have listed the appointments to boards. Isaac Sekel's term was one that he had taken over from Ray Dombry's, so that came to an end as of the end of December of 2023. I spoke with Isaac and asked him if he was willing to stay on because I believe the plant commissioner was happy with, you know, his participation there. So Isaac agreed and he is on with us for the next term, which will then expire, I think, in 20, what, 24, 27? Okay? I actually, I made notes about that, who's going with, I think, okay. So he agreed to do that. The BZA has everyone up to date, nobody is leaving the BZA. The next person would be Matt Bowen, whose term will end both for the plant commission and for the BZA because he has been, he was appointed to the plant commission and the plant commission then, I believe, sent him to the BZA. I'm not quite sure which position, whether he was sent or we sent him to the BZA. So, because if you recall that there are several, two members that come from the plant commission onto the BZA. Let's see.
Just say who?
I said they're recommended from, I mean, the plant commission can determine one person. I was reading through what, what we do in our, in the rules on the, from.
Well, no council.
In the ordinances and in the, pardon?
No council member can be on the BZA.
No, no council member can be, but I didn't say it's a council member, I just thought the council makes a recommendation for someone for the BZA, but we don't need to do anybody at this point. We're not doing anybody, we're full. BZA is okay, only next year, at the end of this coming, this year, then we'll need to replace one person. Okay, let us, oh, Plug Plan Administrator Ray Dombry says, grudgingly agreed to stay on until we can find somebody else to take that position. He's been trying to get out of this for a while now. So we will need to replace Dolly, who is stepping down from the park board, so we will still determine that in the next month or two, we have time, because I believe the park board will not be meeting until March, am I correct? Gee?
It was the same as an average, that's true.
Okay, well, then, you know, so that will be determined later.
Yeah.
Something's trying to be there.
Yes, that is correct, Diana.
Okay, thank you very much.
We don't need it till March.
Okay, good, so that we have time and we will then still consult and find someone who's very excited about coming onto the park board, we should hope. So, okay, Ralph, did you, did somebody try to come out or not?
Please don't.
Oh, yeah, okay. The road commissioner, Bob Skalkowski, I didn't get a chance to speak with him, is Bob not going to be here today, is he away?
Bob's on.
Oh, he's on, oh, all right, Bob, are you willing, are you willing to stay on as the road commissioner?
Oh, yes.
You missed him.
Okay. All right, thank you, all right. So our appointments to the boards for, for the, currently are, you know, completed and we don't have to worry about it until we decide what we do with the park board. With liaison positions, we had set up as liaisons, the various town council members. So Ralph, I believe, you were, who are you, were you working with someone from the, as a liaison?
No, because I was presenting the plant.
Of the plant commission, okay.
I had nothing.
Yes, you did, okay. Sam, you are working with the building commissioner, correct?
Correct.
All right. Rich, you were working with the road commissioner, correct? And I had been working with the park board as a park board liaison. If there is someone else who would like to be on the park board as a liaison, then please let me know and we will put you in and I could step back because I've got plenty to do too. So if there is an interest in someone else who wants to be on the park board liaison, Sam, you're already doing, you can't, Samantha, Ralph, just to go to listen to meetings, you can't vote, but you can let rise. Okay, all right, well, we'll leave that as it is then, if somebody wants to come in, so then we can, so, okay. Then we'll leave that for now, the way it is, and move forward, let's go on with the next, next reports. Absolutely.
Does Samantha need to sign this?
She, yes, she needs to sign that, yes. Yes, because she just, yeah, so you could just print her name under one of those.
Okay.
Okay. All right, departmental reports, police chief, Swistak, please.
Evening, everyone, Samantha, welcome to the town council congratulations. For the month of December, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 201 calls for service when compared to 212 in previous years, a slight decrease in traffic calls for service. During the month of December 12, incident reports documented a total of 10 individuals were arrested. In summary, four misdemeanor arrests for the OI, two felony arrests for operating untoxicated, two traffic related misdemeanor arrests, remember received the driver's license, one misdemeanor arrest for driving in misdemeanor fare with long bus related to a road rage incident on Lake Shore Drive. Overall, it was a mild holiday month for us, no major concerns. Our staff will continue on this winter to work with the road commissioner to make sure personal calls, they'll get chief Bob Skalkowski up there to make sure he's out. Deputy Sykes, who was here at the beginning of the meeting, I've shared with the midnight deputies as well, we'll see a little bit more traffic enforcement in the evening hours and that, both deputy Farthing and deputy Sykes plan out for at least the next couple months or so to do some traffic activity in the nighttime around the town for you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And my daughter-in-law can attest to the fact that they are very good at it when they're doing it at night, she was coming home from working a long shift at the hospital when they were staying with us and she cruised through one of the stop signs and he did stop her.
Real quick add that, when you look at these reports, Highway 12 unfortunately sees a lot of drunk drivers. Between 212 and 12, you have these two major highways out here and we've made a lot of operating untoxicated arrests out there. It's been people from, you pull up, Bed, Harbor, Port County residents, you name it, and it's usually those Friday, Saturday nights and that, so one of our primary duties for the three communities that we serve, that's a main corridor, people coming and going from your community, so that's why sometimes we see all this activity on 12, it affects all three communities.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, well, we appreciate, you know, the work you do. Let us move on to the next, and that is Fire Chief Gary Bendix, please.
Evening, everybody. I take my glasses off so I can read this. During the month of December, we had 106.3 hours spent on everything, we just had three meetings during the month because of the holiday. Then we had 11 calls, no, that's not correct, we had three, five, seven calls during the month, they went, what we had here was a car that hit the stump side of here, flipped the car over, she, unintentional driver and ran off the road, sheered for a stump off, hit the second one and flipped over, she wasn't there, thank goodness, but it blocked up the traffic out here. Also, we had 148 calls last year and I would like to give kudos to my two captains, Mick Wolf and Chris Wolf, Chris beat Mick by, I think, five calls, I think Chris ran 108 this year, I think responding to, and I think Mick was like 105 or something like that. It was totally opposite last year, Mick outran Chris, so, and also, we had, it was the total opposite of last year, last year we had like 85 medical calls, 55 fire calls, it was totally opposite this year, with a lot less medical calls because I think everybody's gone home, out of the community, we didn't have that many calls for medical calls this year compared to last year. So that's a good thing, most of our fire calls were firearms, we do have a lot of them, and other than that, everybody be safe out there.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, chief. All right, let's see, building commissioner, code enforcement, Detcho.
I think so, we sent a report there over practically at paper, you know, six permits, not a whole lot of activity that's involved. I did follow up, send, I know, emailed, I hadn't heard back from Mr. Rouse at that time yet, but he can text me back and, they were trying to schedule the work. Anyway, we're still working on getting it. Still also working on the fence variance, which is just being very slow going. That's about it. Easy, easy, and we have two short-term rental applications that we consider on that day.
Okay, thank you. Now Joan mentioned that there seems to be quite a bit of work going on at 501L portal. Do they have other work going on besides that driveway or is any?
There's no current, so I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Let me hide them.
Okay, then perhaps you could swing by tomorrow or something, just check it out and see, because there were a lot of vehicles there yesterday that had nothing to do with the call.
Well, we're working on the.
Okay, so, okay, and they were parked with the other guy?
Truck, so all for a week. I don't think that we can.
Okay, maybe not, but they had, they had a park, there was a, they were down into the driveway there.
They may have started the work on the driveway.
Okay.
Those other trucks were all mechanical.
All right, okay, thank you for that, and thank you, Deb. All right, let's look now at, let's see, park board, I don't know if you have anything to say, Jean?
I do not. We have nothing going on since we're not meeting, our next meeting is in March.
Okay, thank you very much. Road Commissioner Bob Skalkowski.
I'm just reporting maintenance and cleaning up the trucks, getting ready for the snow, so we're ready, just waiting for the snow.
Okay, thank you. Plant Commission, Ralph Fox.
Oh, yeah, meeting this month and we did approve a mechanical room for 217.
Okay, all right, thank you. BZA, Matt Bowen, I guess there's nothing to report, they haven't had a meeting for a few months now, so. White ditch, I can report that last week, they had someone out here cleaning up the ditch from El Portal East to the Michigan Line and they cleared out, you know, rear, you know, bits of vegetation. you know, bits of vegetation and stuff like this off the banks to make sure that they were cleared to allow water to go through. And they approved paying for that today at the meeting, yes?
So what sections did they work on?
Only from El Portal up to the Michigan State Line.
Okay.
Okay, because that's what the board, the Drainage Board, you know, has to clean up. We are responsible for everything from El Portal east to the Michigan City line. But that agreement, I believe, is going to be running out this year, if it went from 2000, Joan, do you know?
I don't know, I haven't checked it lately, but we have to, it's gonna be, right. I don't remember if it's this year or next year.
Right, where by they, because they joined in with us to do the work, we took over the actual maintenance of that section. So when that is over, it would revert back to the Drainage Board to be responsible for the maintenance of the cleaning, you know, of the ditch area. But that's not something that I would bring up at a meeting without having discussed it first with the, you know, town council, so, so we could put that on for, you know, for, once we get some information from Joan.
Can I ask a quick?
Please.
Sure. That was part of the agreement with the newer path on that side of Oakdale that we had.
They're both passed.
So just like the other one, but did, yeah, the one here should be.
I don't think if there's any dredging or anything, and it has to be done, that's still as the county, we didn't take.
Yeah, we don't.
It's just.
We didn't even do that.
Yeah. Okay, so, so that was it from the White Ditch. Samantha, anything for us on website activity?
Nope, I need to report.
Okay, thank you. Nothing to, New Drake Place with NRC, next meeting's gonna be in February, so then I will report when there's more info to share. Okay, under unfinished business, I'm moving on, we have the Police Services Agreement to Sign. Chief Swistak brought me two copies, I have them here, it's not here, I've got it in here. And it has already been signed by Long Beach, the agreement, so we will be signing, you know, I guess, were they both, yeah, they're both signed. So we have two copies of the agreement, and it is an agreement that we actually agreed to last month, and they have signed, their seal is already intested, you know, on each document. So we will sign this here now, and then we will hand one back, I mean, hopefully Joan will be able to authorize, add the stamp from the Town of Michiana Shores, and one copy will go back to Long Beach via Chief Swistak, and we will keep one here on the records for us. So we can start signing this. Gentlemen, find your, where your names are at. Now.
Ladies.
Mr. Nansky, should we, oh, gentlemen, I'm sorry, town council members, please, I didn't mean to say that. Forgive me. Should we have Michael come in and sign it, since he was actually one of those who approved it, or?
He's resigned at this point, so his signature is not necessary, I mean, since the number passed, obviously, you're not having anyone sign.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I don't think Long Beach is gonna have any issue with this.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. No, because he didn't vote for it.
Makes sense. Is the contract dated December, or what's the date on?
I think it was my copy, I just spilled it down.
I'm sure it started.
It says, made and entered into this 12th day of 2023. Okay, is what it says, because that's the date we voted for it.
Beginning February 1st, 2023.
Did you get a copy of this, or the past year's copy? I thought we had sent one to you earlier, I thought that's all, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, since the date of 12th of December.
Thank you. I'll just sign this and hand it over. Okay, Joan, this will come to you, the others, and we'll give it to Chief Swistak then. All right, let us move on to new business. And I have not included anything under here yet, but, you know, we need to consider what we want to set as our goals for this coming year, different concerns we may have, or things that we think need to be addressed for the town. If you have any ideas right now, mention them now, or if not, then we will discuss it at the next meeting, so, you know, but I'd like us all to think about something that may be near and dear to your heart, about, you know, something here for the town. I know I've said it before, but I think, you know, we need to work on a tree ordinance, because we would like to maintain our, the greenness of our town and the, you know, the, making it, keep it looking, you know, foresty instead of, you know, firmer, kind of feel, look, so, anyway, that would be an important thing, I think that, you know, that we should work on something like that. If you have any other comments you'd like to add now, please, go ahead, anything you care about?
I have to think about it.
All right, good.
I would say that cleaning up the path, you know, like the gentleman did at the corner of.
Yes.
Because there's an awful lot of dead stuff all along. I know we can't do it all at once, because.
Okay, cleaning up Japan.
I have a very, very turn up, that's, that's been a, a wish of myself and Jean on the Park Board, is how we leverage resources that we have or could get to help.
Sounds good.
Mitigate the invasive species, and also, I think it's important that we add new trees, if not, making somehow residents, making some type of tree program available to residents, but also look at the nature trails to work.
Awesome.
On the old section, the nature trail, there are a lot of vehicles that are falling, there's structures of that area that have no trees.
Yeah. Okay, sounds great. You have anything off the top of your head, Samantha?
I'm just gonna look into, if we bring it back to town council, but do we wanna consider a lot of this be, looking into whatever it would take to be dark city, some of the Beverly Shores, we already have less lights than they do anyway, that does it need?
That's, that is very nice, I like, I like the way that sounds, because we are a forested area. We've had, I've had visitors who came over and said, you need more streetlights here. And I said, well, no, we don't, we, we can't find where to go. I said, well, if I invite you to my house, I'll send you a map, you know, on how to get there. I said, if you don't know where to go, then you probably don't belong in the town, maybe that's not friendly. But it, we are a community where we wanna be out in a sort of a field, that we're out in the, in the woods here, instead of, you know, like in a city. That's why most people, those, you know, who move here permanently enjoy that kind of thing, and those who come out on the weekend, I would imagine, enjoy the fact that it's not the city noise and lights. So, anyway, that's just my, I think that's great. So we'll, you know, firm up and start talking about all these kind of things as we go forward in, in the next months. Anything else? Nothing on that? Okay. Attorney Report, Brad, do you have anything to add?
Not a lot of movement on anything largely, because I was gone for chunk of the month, and then we had the holidays afterwards, so kind of, things were back in flow, there will be a couple injunction actions moving forward.
Okay.
A lot in particular, 402, so there's no injunctions that can dislocate somebody from doing action, or they require somebody to take action. In this case, we're talking about mandatory injunction, and if they don't do that, then the town will have the option of coming in and cleaning up the property, but also not making that a sentence alone. On the two new SDRs, neither of those were problems, two for regulars, two completely adults.
Yeah, yeah.
So that doesn't impact the other injunctions that were already operating, so other than that, nothing to get into, at least a public meeting, if there's any litigation that we need to discuss, I'll, you know, schedule an executive session.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. And speaking of an executive session, maybe we will do something so we could chat, you know, with Samantha and go over some of the things, so she would become familiar with what's been going on. So that might be a good idea, but, you know, to get that started. Thank you. Now, into miscellaneous business. Mr. Fitzgerald had raised an issue with town council members and requested information from our clerk treasurer, Joan, and I brought this to the attention, I mean, Brad, Nancy was also notified, and he got all the documents. We spoke very briefly about this the other day, and he will now take over, you know, dealing with this particular issue, because there were certain, you know, things that were set, and, you know, and all this kind of stuff, and claimed to there, so he's going to take care of this for us, you know, right now, you know, to continue, you know, on this.
And when it's not to be discussed openly at a public meeting, it essentially comes down into almost not a public embarrassed type situation, but certainly their employment related and stuff that you wanna discuss.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, so just for everybody who I wanted to include that here. Okay, now, I think that there were some notices that were mailed out to residents, are, do we have any responses on any of those? You know, maybe it's stuff that went out from Deb, I don't know, that, you know, any kind of, with regards to people, I mean, I don't know if there's anything with regards to either building or doing stuff, or has anything gone out, or anything from the office?
What kind of notices were they?
Well, sometimes it's a notice where somebody was doing something like, for instance, somebody puts up a fence that does not belong, so.
So permit violations.
Well, there are violations for something sometimes, yeah, you know.
Are you asking if I sent any?
Yes, where anything sent out by you or, or Joan, I don't know who sent, you would send out things that are violations that Code Book, is that right?
Yeah, citation, uh, yeah, citations or those violations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So nothing, you know, new has gone out from you, or nothing that you were waiting for responses?
Um, well, I never heard back from a 311 dreamer, who had sent a self, well, a certified man came back, he paid, but I delivered one to their home, so, but I've never heard anything since then, whether, you know, okay, follow-up on collections, for that fine or anything like that. So they have received it, knows a violation, but I don't know with anything.
Okay, did you get anything, Joan, do you know?
I don't remember anything on 311, or anything, I don't think there's anything in there.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to clutter my brain with that, so.
Okay, all right.
That's why I have to follow.
Okay. Okay, so then, you know, we'll figure that out. Any other kind of notices to not to residents, or anything, any other violations, or meaning, you know, and payment of fines, or anything like that? Nothing new has gone up with those? Okay, all right, so we've got A and B done. Now, Joan reminded me about a hold harmless agreement for 501O Portal, they are working on it. I believe that at the meeting that we did, the question was raised about a hold harmless agreement.
Yes.
Because they're working, but did we ever receive a document from them, do you know? Deb?
Not that I know of.
Okay, so that we should pursue that. I have a copy of one that was, that we got from the Drainage Board, you know, unless you've got some kind of a very basic one, right?
Definitely, that was a very basic.
Okay, all right, so then I could pass that on.
That'll be considerable for what you need for this.
Okay, all right, then I'll just send that on to you, you know, later tonight, I'll send you a copy.
Okay, I'm glad you have to come down here and sign something, that's.
Well, but I don't think that we have a separate form here, do we, Joan?
I don't have any form.
Nothing, at all, for the hold harmless.
All right, if you gave us a sample.
Oh, we do have a sample for you, okay.
That I used for Mr. Keppern.
Oh, okay.
Maple City.
Oh, excellent, so could, please share that with Deb then, so she could get it from the owners of 501, okay? Okay, so now, and another question had also come up, and that was with regards to the fee the BZA has raised. They have been charging $150 for a very long time, but paperwork, mailing, and all this kind of stuff is much more expensive, and we have even encountered various hearings, I guess, or applications that have come in that cost almost $700, correct, Joan? You know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I remembered something, you know, very large amount because of what had to be done.
It isn't $700.
Well, I know it's a big amount, that I just, I'm, that's what I'm saying, correct me if I'm wrong.
I figured from, because with everything we do, it's probably still around $250 or less.
Okay, well, I remember one thing that we have written into something that said that, you know, was very, very expensive, but, you know, so they're raising the fees in order to be able to cover the expenses. I took a look at, you know, what other towns had, and most of them only started 400, you know, and 500 for BZA fees for various different things, so, not, not planned, but BZA itself. So, anyway, but the BZA did have a meeting, and at that meeting, they voted to increase the fees. I believe we also raised this at sometime last year, here at a meeting.
This has been discussed since I was on the, hey, that's four years ago. Over a year ago, we had this discussion, and Brad confirmed that it's not, that town council is not involved in BZA fee structure. They don't, they do their own thing, but as far as whether they need to have a public meeting to discuss it.
No, so, right, the fee structure, all of it comes down to the enabling ordinance or statute, whatever was created, and the language I was in that, as far as allowing the BZA to set the fees. Now, generally speaking, that all originates with the town council, but that originating, or that native statute ordinance was the town council giving the BZA the authorities to set the fee. So, does it need to come back to town council? Not necessarily, but could you ratify it, or say, you know, there's?
Well, when I looked at this a few years ago, I could not find anything in the various ordinances that I have, where a fee structure was established. Now, there could be something in the archives that is, you know, 30 years old, I don't know that.
Yeah, it could be, because they usually did things by resolutions. That way it's easier to go into the Code Books and find it. For me to go back through years and years of meeting minutes is ridiculous.
Oh, right, I see, yeah.
I would try to do that.
It's just all the ones I've had access to.
I think there is an organize in there for the first one for 150, I mean, the last one.
Well, if you can find that, that's a start.
Absolutely, that'd be very good, because I read.
It consistent then with what the words are.
Yeah. Encumbrance doesn't involve, unencumbrance, I mean, resolution doesn't involve that much, plus, we do keep them, and they're categorized, so.
Okay, thank you very much, yeah, because I looked as well through, you know, our ordinances, and I looked through state, everything it said about the BZA, and I looked through that Citizen Planning Guide, you know, and I, as well, like you did, and I could not find anything specific, you know, teaching and saying, and how it should be done. But because the BZA does make decisions outside of us, and in fact, people can come to us if they don't like the BZA decision, that means we give the BZA a certain amount of leeway to work, you know, and make decisions on their own, so.
It has to be experienced with the communities and have a better establishment.
All right, and then it's an issue, because we do have two people coming up for, you know, two different residences coming up, you know, to the BZA now, so. Okay, so that means we can leave the fee and leave them alone with that fee as it is, or do we, or do we still need to check?
I would still like to, if Joan can find the ordinance for what was set up on 50, and then we'll just confer with the BZA on that.
Okay.
I don't know necessarily this board, will we take any action on the bill report back in February?
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Okay, any communications received? Any council members got anything? Joan, did you get, receive anything new with regards to the town?
The only thing I received was from Mr. Fitzgerald.
Okay. All right, I did not receive anything now either this month, so, you know, since the last meeting on the 30th, so, nothing for me. How about public comment? Anybody out there wanting to comment? Is there anyone online who would like to comment?
I should point out, we have someone named James Hamlin, I'm not familiar with James, I'm not sure what his role means.
But if he's talking, he's muted.
Okay, Mr. Hamlin, if you, oh, you're muted, if you are speaking, let us know.
Okay.
Maybe nothing, okay. Any other comments from anyone else in the audience? No? All right, so if no other public comment, how about council comments?
Welcome to Samantha.
Yes.
And thank you for reaching off for retaining their status.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.